And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners is February 4th. This is our business meeting. I'll ask Mr. Cupp, our county administrator, to call the role.
Well, good morning, commissioners. We are joined this morning with county counsel Stephen Madcor and Mary Rathke, our clerk of the board. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow. Here. Would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And the first order of business, as we usually try to make it every time, is citizens' communication. However, we have a presentation tonight, and I'd like to ask Commissioner Schrader to do the introductions.
Well, thank you, colleagues. Who's first? Put on green lights on. I want to thank my colleagues for allowing me to do this. This is very special and meaningful, and I think it shows the commitment that we have as a county to helping our veterans with our partners out in the community, and in particular, Clackamas Community College. So it is a privilege and an honor to introduce my friend Frances Ritchie. And five years ago, Frances sat down to write a poem to honor members of the Oregon National Guard as they returned from the largest deployment overseas since World War II. She agreed to write this poem to support the Clackamas Community College Military Family Scholarship Endowment. And as she started to do this work, and oh, by the way, I see my friend Chip Salmon in the audience, who was the contact who called Frances. But as she started to do this one poem, it became clear that there was more to it than that. That one poem was not going to be enough of a narrative of the folks who came home and had these deep transforming experiences of what it was like to be a warrior, to have their life put at risk, to be in areas where, you know, where there's nothing but sand and just totally foreign, and have to adjust and work with the people there. So she set out to write a book called Voices of the Guard with the permission from the folks who were interviewed. And they were compiled and edited, and colleagues, you have it before you today, into a poetry chapbook, Voices of the Guard. One of the reasons this is so critical for us is that because of this work, Clackamas Community College, in cooperation with our county, has a veterans' center now specifically set up to serve veterans that need services. They work very closely with our Veterans Services Officers as well, and they actually were able to pull together with Clackamas County, I believe, the first Army Strong Center west of the Mississippi that was not on a military base. It was our college and with our efforts that stepped up to the plate to make sure that everything was done to help people. And the biggest piece is the Military Family Endowment Fund, that not only is an endowment fund to give scholarships to veterans, but every member of their family across the board has an opportunity to apply. So daughters, sons, spouses, has an opportunity to get educated. And I know that this is meaningful to the chair because he is a graduate of Clackamas Community College.
Proud graduate.
And also, a proud graduate, and it also, you know, you know from a personal sense how it can be transformative to have that help and have that education. So, so today, basically, Ritchie will read before an Oregon, or Frances, my dear friend, will read before an Oregon Humanities Conversation Project, Life After War. This is tonight at February 4th at Camp Withicum in Clackamas County. Her reading will begin at 5:30. We'll have a reception from 4:30 to 5:30. And then there'll be a presentation, Life After War, a presentation by Jim LaManson, a freelance photographer and writer, who shares the stories of returning soldiers. And we will have, again, a reception prior to this very special reunion. So colleagues, I'd like to give you a personal invitation. I know that we have some other commitments tonight, but I'm hopeful you can come to the reception, meet Frances, who's been a dear friend for five years and who I have visited in New York, and hope to do so again. And we, each of you has a flyer, and you also have a copy of Voices of the Guard.
Yeah, mine's unsigned, unlike yours, Martha.
(laughing) Yeah, Frances, you're going to have to sign everybody's.
Am I the only one without a signature?
Well, you have to write a real, but you're going to have to write something, Dear Chair Ludlow, thank you for supporting Commissioner Schrader.
Exactly. Yeah. I can't believe it. Everybody else is signed.
So that being said, I'd like to introduce Frances Ritchie, and we are going to have three folks who are going to be doing readings as well, and Frances, you're going to introduce them.
Okay. Good morning.
All right, good morning. Thank you. Can you, is this on? Yeah.
Yeah, pull it towards you a little bit, though.
What?
Pull it towards you. It actually moves.
Oh, it actually moves. Oh, thank you. Wow, that makes things a lot easier. Martha, thank you so much for such a, such a, such a nice introduction, and, well, I'm just, I'm thrilled to be here. I love Oregon, and when I go back home and they say, "How was it?" I say, "I love Oregon." And they say, "What did you see?" And I said, "Well, just the people. I didn't see anything else." So I just think you have a wonderful community here, and I'm delighted to be here. And we're going to share, we're going to share excerpts from Voices of the Guard with you today. It's a chapbook, as Martha said, of voice poems made from the words of Oregon service members. Twelve hours of transcription, interviews, thirty minutes lifted, their own poetry, really. They were speaking in poetry. So this is a very special book. It's never been commercial. We've never sold it. It came from a partnership between Clackamas Community College and the Oregon National Guard to benefit military families, the Military Family Scholarship Endowment. It's a privilege to be here right now at such an auspicious time, when it's the 50th anniversary of Clackamas Community College. And, and to be here, to be invited here, I can't tell you what it means to me, to be invited here for the launch of this collection out into the world, so that everybody, anybody who's ever served in a war zone anywhere in the world can read these stories. And unfortunately, we're not going to be able to read more than three today. I hope some of you can come tonight. They are so moving. If you don't get to come, please read it. It only takes fifteen minutes. And they are, they're incredible. And this is your guard. These are your service members. So, you know, it's, it's really worth the read. So first, we're going to have, Jack Hammond is going to read the first, these are prose poems, by the way. They're not rhyming. These are their words lifted, their poetry lifted out. Jack is going to read the very first poem out of a section called "Home," the first section in the book.
Good morning. The door opened on the back of the C-130. The air came in. You could smell a little of the jet fuel, but it was just that crystal-clear air, absolutely crystal-clear. And you could see trees in the background, green, and it was like your eyes were starving for green. They put us on little buses, all of us on gurneys, took us to the hospital. My wife met me up there. She had my little boy walk in the room first. He was two. And she said, "Hey, who's that?" And he goes, "That's Daddy." And I'd go, "Come here, little guy," and I held him unto myself. I didn't really feel home because, you know, I still had my whole platoon overseas. You really can't rest, and you shouldn't, until you know that they're okay. When they came home, I came home with them.
Our second reader is Chip Salmon's. And by the way, just a little, if not for Chip, none of this would have happened. None of it, because he stayed after me. I said no the first time. And he stayed after me, and then we, we worked it out, right? So he's, Chip is going to read the second piece in the first section called "Home." Chip.
Probably should be noted that Chip is a veteran, right?
Yes, yes.
And the force behind the circle of honor down between the buildings. The first thing I wanted to do was to go get Mexican food. That's actually one of the things I thought about long and hard. There's a place called El Sol de Mexico in Corvallis. Did I dream about fajitas in Iraq? Yes, I did. I didn't dream a lot when I was there. I guess part of that is repression. I did have nightmares at home. I'd wake up in the night kicking around or punching the wall. They were directly related to one particular fight, the one where I actually got wounded. No one was lost, thank God. The only people who died were on the other side. I got shrapnel in my lower left back, under my armor. Piece got through my left ring finger and broke the tip of it. I was half-deaf on my left side. I don't know how many people I killed that night. I was a machine gunner, and later on, some guys told me that I cut down a dozen in about a two-minute strip. It's hard to explain. Those guys chose to fight us. They were doing what they had to do, and we were doing what we had to do. But at the same time, there's a very human factor in there, just to come to grips with the fact that you killed another human being. Coming home was very confusing and very troubling to me because I felt those things, but I didn't know what I was feeling. I isolated myself. I figured I couldn't cause any problems or get in any trouble if I sat in my room by myself and looked at the Internet half the day or played a video game in the corner. I felt like I didn't know how to interact with half the people I knew anymore. My wife was the one who helped me deal with a lot of it. We've gone to counseling. My pastor is a special, a former special forces soldier from Vietnam, passing knowledge down from one generation to another.
Just to let you know, tonight, our readers tonight are all veterans, or one mother of a veteran. We are, this is entirely veterans. So, Jack, too.
Thanks for mentioning it.
Yeah. Okay, so. You're here. (laughing) Shelley probably needs no introduction. She is, wow, she's the most amazing person I know. And she's going to read from a section called "Waiting." And this is a section taken from interviews with spouses.
When he's gone, I can't sleep in our bed. For most of the year, I slept in the living room in the recliner. And my husband knows, he knows I'm like that, so he calls and talks to my son and says, "Where's your mom sleeping? Tell her to sleep in her room for crying out loud." I have his cologne that he always wore, and I would spray it wherever. For the kids, instead of having pillowcases on their beds, we used his T-shirts, and it made the kids feel close to him. And we made a flat daddy, and we took him to the Enchanted Forest. Flat Daddy went on all the rides with us. He went to the first day of school. Our song is John Denver's song, Annie's Song. That song, it was his ringtone on my cell. I knew I wasn't going to hear that ringtone forever. My kids know every word to it. For them, that is Mom, and that's Dad's song. That song is Dad. That song is a big piece of who he is. I had a box that I had sitting out that was just available to ship at any time. And, you know, the kids were free to write whatever, or any stuffed animals, or whatever they wanted, and throw it in the box. Whenever they had a thought or a feeling, put it in there. When the box was full, the sweetest thing, before my husband left this last deployment, we went to Hawaii. We all went together. We'd never been there. And my daughter got this stuffed seal, so I had the box, took it to the post office, and taping it up. And you have to fill out the customs form, and I look inside, and there's this seal with an index card that said, "Daddy, I hope this makes you comfortable while you're away." And the key, the kids have, well, there's a tree outside. It was the oddest thing. It's, it's just an ugly old cherry tree, but they called it the Daddy Tree. So they would pick leaves off the Daddy Tree. They were Daddy Leaves. If someone would leave somewhere when there were leaves on it, they would pick them off and take them in the car with us, anywhere. I mean, that was their thing. I don't know who started it, probably one of the girls. The worst time is not really a specific time, but, you know, sometimes when you haven't heard from him in a couple days, and maybe you hear a car door shut outside, you just get that eerie feeling. There's been a couple of days like that where you just kind of think, "Oh, my God, please, please," you know? You don't want that somebody to be walking up to your door. After you put the kids to bed, that's when the lonely sets in, because the kids keep you going all day, and after they go to bed, it gets quiet. There were a lot of nights spent with the same song, "Wait for You." It just makes you cry when you listen to it, but you can't help but listen to it over and over.
Well, that alone was moving. It's one thing to hear from the veterans, but it's certainly very appropriate to hear about their spouse and their children and their lives while they're gone, serving their country. I know I'm going to have a chance, we have a C-Form meeting tonight, but I'm going to be down there for as long as I can to honor the memory of the people that have served, and that's a living memory, and of course, those ones that sacrificed all. But I think those are, I can't wait to read the whole thing, and I'm sure I'll cry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, citizens' communication. I have several cards here. Tina Olson, Les Poole. How's that Kleenex? Yeah, exactly. Veterans go first.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, commissioners and Chair Ludlow. I have to get my thoughts in perspective after that last poem. It brings a lot of memories. I was going to come up here and say, "Big Spaz, you know?" All retrospect, veterans in this county, as you know, you've heard it over and over again with me, very, everything's personal to me. And I'm getting ready to go to a funeral here in a little bit from a soldier that was part of the 41st. His name was Michael Sorensen, and he overdosed on heroin, 22-years-old. I got him clean, took about three years. He fought. He really fought hard. He was the most genuine spirit that I seen. And on his birthday, his mother found him in bed, pretty dead. And I really tried hard with this kid. And he was getting ready to go to school, got him enrolled. And we all have our demons, and I have them too, but this kid couldn't fight him off. He was sent to Iraq to tours, and he started heroin over in Afghanistan, which is accessible, very accessible. And sometimes, when you come home, the VA puts you on methadone, which every day, if you go up to the VA at nine o'clock in the morning, you'll see a whole line of veterans receiving their dose, and they only require them to have fifteen minutes of counseling. Then they send them home. And if you don't know of Matthew Brennan, which had died, had been in the Clackamas County Jail, they didn't target him. He committed suicide down on 82nd, and instead of shooting his head, he shot his jugular vein. This was Michael's best friend. Michael had his demons because he was there with Matthew at the time of shooting himself. So he had those demons on top of everything else, and me and this other veteran got him cleaned, and he got on his way. It took three years, I said, and got him into school, and we thought everything was going to be okay, until I got that call. And today, I'm attending his funeral. So, you know, even though we do a good job out there in a county with mental services, sometimes these veterans, you know, go down the cracks. And what I'm saying is that I'm urging the county really to talk with the sheriff in this county, to make sure we target these in the jails, because these two kids have both been through Clackamas County Jail. And even though I appreciate Craig Roberts, I really do, because he does his best, I just think there needs to be more of an effort to target these, because if these two kids were targeted at the time that they were arrested, we could have saved them, because it took two years for them to go down that trail of the heroin, and they were caught. And so, but on the other retrospect is that you guys do do a good job for veterans, even though people come up here and testify. We all know who that is. You know, you know, I appreciate each and every one of you, because you've always listened to me for now, several years, of talking about veterans. And you guys get it now, and which I appreciate so much in that, and I haven't been up here for a while, so that means you're doing a good job. Okay? So, I, like I said, I appreciate, appreciate every one of you that listen to my stories and listen to my advocacy work, but like I said, I want to thank each and every one of you for doing that job. I mean, it's hard, and as you noticed, these poems are really hard to sit through. They really are. So I thank each and every one of you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Les. Thank you, Tina. Interesting subject, and it touches everyone. My father passed away 15 years ago, and he served in World War II. And this Christmas, I delivered something I've had for 15 years to my sister. We all had a family dinner, and I walked in and I took in my dad's infamous flannel shirt and his pullover vest that he wore for a million times. I kept it, and kept it, and kept it. Well, my sister was a great caregiver for my dad, and I smuggled it into her closet on Christmas. And the next day, I got one of the best phone calls from her I've ever had. I was in the last draft they ever had, and I watched the kids, and they were kids, four or five years older than me. It's, you know, you're getting into high school, and you're starting to grow up, and next thing you know, there's kids that weren't that much older than you, and they're coming home in a box. And the first time I got a chance to vote was in '76. I was so disgusted with what had gone on and how Nixon had been shamed and how the war had gone. And there was Jimmy Carter, a well-intended guy, you know, or his head, and Nixon. And here I had a chance to vote, and I'm whatever, 18-years-old, and I didn't even vote. Didn't even vote. Mister, "Let's get out and vote," didn't even vote. Things changed a lot since then. The other thing I want to touch on very briefly is, is the economy and what we're seeing in Salem right now, and the dilemma you're in. We've got folks here, obviously, that need more help for our vets. We've got a homeless problem, and we've got an economy that is a little fragile. And I'm sure you, you hear this. I'm saying something that's pretty obvious to anyone that's really paying attention. And my concern is we can't tax our way out of it. If, if we don't have more industrial land, if we don't have good living wage jobs, we can't fake our way there by raising wages or manipulating things. It just won't happen. And there are so many tax increases proposed that we don't know how we're going to pay for them. So there's a fine line between getting everyone in the lifeboats and sinking the lifeboats. And you can bet that, that no matter what happens in Salem, it's going to affect the county's ability to get money to fix roads, and it's certainly going to affect the ability for you to provide services. Some of the effects may be good and some may be negative, but it's really obvious that all of the proposals that we're hearing out there are not, when you look at them as a whole, they're not all going to happen, but they're also not all affordable. And, and that's one reason why we need to keep our priorities high, and that's why you've heard me repeatedly bring up this issue of the roads and how are we going to, you know, plan for the future, because much of what was done in the past was misguided, and we've got to make some changes, and hopefully, we can continue to send a message to the region that we're a regional player, but we're our own entity, and we need local control over what we're doing as much as possible. I want to thank the veterans again. That was really something to listen to, and hopefully, it'll get posted on the website. Thank you. Thank you both. All right, I'll ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, the Consent Agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, Approval of a Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Department of Education Early Learning Division for Home Visiting and Parenting Services. Approval of an Agency Services Contract with North Clackamas School District for Parenting Education Classes. Under Community Corrections, Approval of Amendment Number Six to the Contract with Bridges to Change for Case Worker and Mentoring for Community Corrections Mental Health and Justice Reinvestment Programs. Under Elected Officials' Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes, A Request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for Amendment Number Two to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon State Marine Board for the Boating Safety Action Plan, and a Request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for Amendment Number Three to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon State Marine Board for Boating Safety Action Plan. Under Administration, Approval of a Resolution Adopting a County Energy Policy and Goals. Under Business and Community Services, Approval of Revisions to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Metro for the North Milwaukee Industrial Redevelopment Plan Project. Under Service District Number Five, which is Street Lighting, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the McLaughlin Boulevard Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the McLaughlin Boulevard Street Lighting Project. And Under Water Environment Services, approval of Amendment Number Three to the Contract Documents with Pre-OxyChem for Pilot Trial of the Disinfection Chemical Vigorox Second Phase. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, did the commissioners want to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? All right, I'll ask for motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Schrader and others. Any further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. And, um, so now, we will go to the very exciting county administrator update.
So the first thing I was going to do is to invite you to the Paroxym chemical Vigorox tasting that we've got scheduled for you after the meeting.
Yeah, you go ahead.
I actually was able to pronounce that, so.
Carefully.
Okay, I just have a couple of items. One, um, is, uh, we just, uh, heard from the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, which is a state agency that provides grants that helps Oregonians take care of local streams, rivers, and wetlands, as well as natural areas. Uh, the board just relayed publicly that between nineteen ninety-nine and through the end of two thousand fifteen, they've invested some twelve million dollars in Clackamas County, uh, and including projects that included some five hundred and seventy-nine miles of streams and two hundred and fifty-four miles of fish habitat. So sixty-five percent of the grant dollars go to on-the-ground restoration projects, which includes, uh, improvement of irrigation efficiency and fish passage. So it's, uh, good that they're doing this. We hope to be able to benefit from more, uh, in the future. Just wanted to share that information with you. And, uh, then the other thing I wanted to let you know about is that our Women, Infants, and Children's Program is working to make their services, uh, more accessible to Clackamas County, uh, citizens. And as you know, the program provides supplemental food and healthcare needs to low-income pregnant, postpartum, breastfeeding women, as well as infants and children under the age of five who are at risk. And this past Monday, we have launched our eWIC program, which will now allow participants to use, uh, WIC debit cards to be able to purchase WIC-approved foods. Uh, this system will simplify and improve on the old paper voucher system that's been used, and make the services more accessible and easier to use. Uh, we do have some six WIC locations, uh, in the county, in Oregon City, Gladstone, Canby, Milwaukee, Happy Valley, and Sandy. Uh, and we actually have, uh, openings currently for WIC participants. So I thought I'd share that with you as well. And that's it.
Thank you. Now it's time for commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Savis.
Well, thank you. Um, it was a very touching presentation this morning. I was kinda reckoning back when I was a kid, um, walking through the naval hospital, room to room, floor to floor during the Vietnam War, and, um, many of the trays inside some of those rooms was the shrapnel they had taken out of them, you know, the day before, week before. And, uh, wasn't one surgery, it was often many surgeries. Uh, so it was, I was just reckoning back to that. Um, we have a lot of issues. I think I was thinking that maybe this year would start off a little slow and then build up steam, but it's a month that things, uh, there are so many issues, and I, everyone I've talked to is just overwhelmed with issues with veterans, and a lot of community stuff related to parks, and community members passionate about parks and libraries, recently discussions about roads and wastewater, fairgrounds, museums, the homeless crisis we have here, the working homeless crisis we have. Uh, our workforce issues with things that are talking about in legislature, businesses, small businesses that can no longer afford, or even maybe perhaps stay alive with some of the pending legislation that's in front of them, in front of us. A friend of mine, an employee, recently lost his healthcare because, um, employer couldn't afford to employ him the full forty-hour shift and reduce his hours, and, and was forced to cut his healthcare. And, uh, you know, I think the one that's most astonishing of all is the working homeless. The cost of housing is so darn high right now that you have people that have jobs, decent-paying jobs, that can't afford to live in this, in the metro region. Um, the lack of inventory and lack of opportunity for reasonably affordable housing. Used to be, when, it used to be an apartment was something that, um, you know, if you didn't make a lot of money, you had a, uh, didn't, didn't have a high-income job, and I, I lived in an apartment myself. Um, that was a place that was, you, you know, you lived there, uh, on low income, and maybe bought something a little bit bigger, or rented something a little bit larger when you made a little bit more money. But when the working homeless, I was just by myself, single at the time, but working homeless, two fam, two members, mom and dad working and can't afford a home. It's, uh, pretty, pretty striking. But I just wanna just acknowledge that January started out full steam. I mean, we have a lot of major issues in front of us, and I'm just really concerned when you have a lot of these. And sometimes these things conflict, but people are out, people are aware. Um, you know, I, I don't know what to say. What's hotter right now? Is it libraries? Is it roads? Is it the homeless? I mean, we have so many things before us, in counties and cities, uh, and we all deal with that firsthand, and probably the county deals with a lot of that more so, 'cause we provide a lot of the services for a lot of these people when they get in trouble, or they're having a very difficult time. Uh, but I just wanna acknowledge, uh, we've got a very tough year ahead of us, and it's election year. Um, we have a lot of legislatures in session right now, and, um, it's gonna be really, really tough, as we kinda try to strike a balance, uh, with our community, um, and some of the competing issues. And really, a struggle really about resources. There's not a lot of resources out there, um, and sometimes it's a tug-of-war. And, um, there's only so much I think we can, that, you know, there's not, no pot, pot of money out there. And I think sometimes, if you look at some of these legislative bills, there's the assumption that some of these small businesses are, have oodles of money, and maybe those corp, large corporations do, but we don't have that many large corporations in this area or in Oregon. Um, and it's a small business that kinda takes some of the heat for that. So, uh, I've been talking to members of the, of the chamber, business owners, again, the employees, and, uh, very, very difficult, uh, to talk to a friend of mine who's dealing with a health crisis and to lose his insurance, uh, and have his hours cut at the same time. So, uh, we have a lot of very human issues before us, and it's very touching, uh, today, just to start this meeting off with some very, um, touching words, and, and, uh, kinda, been kinda choked up and kinda welled up during that presentation. So, I, um, I wanna leave my thoughts and comments there, and, uh, Chair, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm finished.
And now, thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I share, uh, Mr. Savis's, um, things he said today. They're very poignant, and thank you, Paul. Uh, with that in mind, uh, this week, we had the Association of Oregon Counties meeting, the Legislative Committee and Board meeting. And as a group of county commissioners across the state, we went through a hundred and five pieces of legislation that are being offered up in this short term, and we took hard positions on almost everything on there. And, uh, believe me, there's a lot of things that are not friendly, uh, to the operation of our counties, and we're trying to make a difference. On Monday, that afternoon, I testified in, uh, legislature in favor of House Bill Forty-Ninety-three. That is the courthouse fee, a five-dollar fee can be collected by our, uh, judge to be sent into a fund to help build a courthouse in Clackamas County. That's another one of these hard decisions that, uh, Commissioner Savis has alluded to that has been dropped in our lap. Um, and it's because, um, again, a failing infrastructure and the wherewithal, wherewithal or the ability to figure out ways to pay for deteriorating structures. And, um, I've often said that our, um, taxpaying public in Clackamas County is very generous and, um, have, tend to prioritize things that are important to them. But as most of us are becoming a little bit older, I think it's time that we need to look at the next generation, and what kind of shape are we gonna leave this world in when we go? And, uh, that's what I'm working on, to build our infrastructure, including our roads, our courthouse, and our buildings, in a better place than when I arrived. This week, I made a motion, and it was approved by all five commissioners, that we take a look at our road funding and offer up to voters, uh, fees to fix our roads. I think we have a good plan, and I would hope that you all, who in the past have voted down on fees, to look at it in its entirety. And next week, we'll roll out that plan. It's a combination of things. It has a sunset date. It has projects that will be listed and approved. And, um, it's very important, just not for your own pocketbook, but for the safety, welfare, recreation, business prosperity of this county. And so I hope you folks look at it, uh, very hard. And the reason why I did that is because when I ran for this position, I said that I would refer to voters certain, um, funding measures. And I'm keeping that promise to you. In return, I would like the voters to keep their promise to me when they elected me, that to, we would support your actions. So you're gonna have the opportunity to decide the fate of the county through our roads. But I did keep my word, I offered that up to you. So between now and Election Day, I'm willing to go out and talk about why we need this, and how you get to decide the future of Clackamas County. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Well, first of all, colleagues, let me thank you for allowing us to have this presentation today. It was very moving. When I look at, at the book that Francis wrote and the people that she interviewed, one person stands out to me, and that's Colonel Scott McRae. Um, he was always very good to me, he's retired now. His son died in Afghanistan, he bled to death, actually, um, and was injured, and it was very hard on him. And I got to know him because of that tragedy, and he and I served together on the Veterans Committee that, at the time, Governor Ted Koolengowski put together, uh, to take a look at legislation and things that we could do, uh, to alleviate, uh, the pain that it, that was going on with people coming home. And what we could do as communities, and what we could do legislatively, to make sure that our veterans got the services they deserve because they served us. And so he was one of the folks who had talked about this, and again, lost his son. The other person that jumps out at me is Master Sergeant Vince Jox. Vinny, um, wonderful man, he is still in the Guard. He, um, lost most of his unit in an IED explosion, um, in Iraq. And, uh, he, uh, was one of the key people who's, who worked in the reintegration program for our Guard when they came home. He was the point person, he worked with all the adjunct generals, he worked with the boots-on-the-ground folks, and to this day, he is still a good, dear friend. And lastly, I would like to mention Chip Salmons again. Chip was responsible for the Circle of Honor outside that you see in our public area, uh, here on this campus. He approached me a number of years ago, at the time I was in the Senate, for a brief time, where I did serve as the Veterans, uh, Chair, um, of the Senate, where we did, we were able to pass, I think, the first wave of legislation dealing with veterans issues. And to this day, that committee still exists. It is still looking at veterans' issues regularly, and it is still committed, uh, to making sure that our military families are taken care of. Um, I do encourage people, please, tonight, at four-thirty at Camp Withacum at ten-ten Southeast Clackamas Road, there will be a reception with Francis Rishi from four-thirty to five-thirty with book signings, and then there will be a program with, um, Jim Lomenson. And again, this is hosted by Clackamas Community College, uh, their Veterans Education and Training Center, and actually, Oregon Humanities. And we will be there as county officials, because we are partners with those organizations in working with and for our veterans. And I can talk a little bit about other things I did this week, and I'll go into my ARCs thing, but I do wanna mention one thing. And one of my most precious possessions that I have, when I was veterans, um, when I was the chair, when I, when I left, uh, when I left that position in the Senate, that in my office, um, if people would like to see it, I have, um, a shadow box that was given to me that has, uh, every patch and coin of every unit, Air Guard, National Guard, Army Unit that was deployed to Iraq or Afghanistan. And that continues to be one of my, um, my most treasured possessions, because, uh, I was not a military person. I just did this because I saw the need, and when the military folk honor you with their coins, and they honor you with your patches, evidently, it's a, it's a big deal. And as a civilian, um, it's, it's one of the things that I'm just, I, I was shocked and surprised when they did that, when I was, it was my last day in the Senate as the Chair of the Veterans Committee. And I am very grateful I came back to the commission where I can still be the boots-on-the-ground with my colleagues for these people. So I'll give a report on some, uh, Association Morgan County things, um, next go-around, next week when we meet. Right now, let me just pull up my, uh, my piece on the arts, of what's been going on here in Clackamas County, Arts and Cultures Activities. Uh, the Portland Winterlight Festival event in Milwaukee. Circus Luminescence is a fusion of theater, circus, juggling, music, and comedy in a glow-in-the-dark wonderland of infinite imagination. Sounds exciting. Friday, February fifth, sixth, at six-thirty PM at Triment Max Orange Line Park, Southeast Avenue Station in Milwaukee. Uh, the Last Regiment of Syncopated Drummers delivers a heart-pounding and visually inspiring performance as their magic engages audiences of all ages. Saturday, February sixth, six and six-thirty PM at Triment Max Orange Line, Southeast Park Avenue Station, once again, in Milwaukee. And for more, any information about any of the arts activities in the county, you can go to the website, clackamasartsalliance.org. So thank you, colleagues, and, um, that's the news today.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
Well, Les, I, I was the last draft in seventy-two, so I, I don't, I won't ask how old you are, but.
Are we older than you?
Am I? Um, it was interesting, because it was the last draft, uh, and I did vote the, the first chance I ever had. Um, many, I was at Oregon State, and a lot of folks joined the military, uh, when that last draft came out. My mother, I was taught really high on the list, but I was legally blind in one eye, and thanks to technology, uh, I have vision out of that eye now, but, uh, I was shot in the eye with a BB gun as a kid. Um, so there was no way I could serve, uh, wearing plastic contact lenses. Um, and if you've ever worn those, you know what that's like. And they were plastic. But, uh, veterans, on, on the veteran issue, there's a lot of things. One thing the sheriff does track, who goes into jail, whether they're veterans or not. But one thing we haven't done, which I'd like to see done, is Veterans Court. Uh, there aren't a lot of cases, but everyone is an important case. So having, uh, a judge that, that, um, you know, it's just like DUI court and all those other things, that really has the heart for veterans. Uh, even saving one life is an important life. So I, I hope someday we'll look at, at that, uh, how we could do that. I, I had a chance, of course, to go to AOC on the, uh, co-chair of the Public Safety Committee, and, uh, House Bill Forty-fourteen's looking at, uh, some rule, uh, rule changes to the marijuana law. One of the problems I have with Salem, and you guys probably did too, is many times bills are adopted, and then they have to come back the next year and clean them up. And lots of times, that's a problem. If the bills, I mean, marijuana was legalized, and then they discover all these problems. Of course, you know, y- y- you learn as you play, so, uh, sometimes those things don't come up. But, uh, we, uh, AOC has, uh, some great people on staff that are really watching these bills. Matter of fat, fact, uh, the marijuana bill was written by, uh, the AOC's lawyer. Um, and then Senate Bill Fifteen-eleven expands access to, uh, medic, uh, medical cardholders. Uh, it's really the beginning of medical and recreational marijuana coming together. There's also a bill, at least to straighten out banking in Oregon. There's also a bill, at least to straighten out banking in Oregon. It doesn't really, you know, because there's a lot of cash, and it was mentioned that a lot of those facilities have safes in the dirt out in the fields, and I'm going to be hunting for those next week with my metal detector. And that's a bad thing. There's also the courthouse bill, which you mentioned. I'd say Clackamas County is in line. Monoma County's a huge hunk, and I'm a little unsure why Clackamas County's is so big and we need to probably talk about that.
We do.
I was surprised that ours is over a hundred million or something, the request. At least, that's what was said at one of the meetings I was at. I was surprised to hear that.
Our request isn't... Our request is not a hundred million.
Yeah. It's what?
That would be... Wait, excuse me. That would be something proximate based on what information we have now. We don't have complete information.
Oh, I know. We don't have even a place for it yet.
But the request would be for half of that amount.
Yeah. But that's a lot. I mean, that means the taxpayers have to pay the other half just on the state side. But anyway, I'm sure we'll have a discussion about that. Also, I attended the Community Corrections Transition Center. It's amazing. I mean, I was amazed at what we do. It's not dissimilar from our Family Justice Center. It's kind of a one-stop place. The justice reinvestment dollars' purpose was to reduce prison and jail population. The only way you can do that, you know, frankly, is, one of the best ways is education. They do classes, GED classes there. They had some graduates, but, you know, when you're in jail, you might get the class, but when you get out, where are you going to go? You can go to the community college, or you can go to the Transition Center, evidently. Clackamas Community College will have that. But part of the justice reinvestment dollars was certain percentages that went to nonprofits. I was amazed how many nonprofits are participating in that organization, just like the Family Justice Center. I mean, there's a great partnership that exists. Salem is always scary to me. It really is. We, you know, there's emergency clauses. We may not hear about them until the night of, and if we're, you know, it's kind of hard as a county commissioner to just clear your schedule and take off to Salem. Emergency clauses, we've used them. They are important, but there needs to be some controls in how that works. Road maintenance, you know, I mentioned maybe last week, I can't remember, but, you know, we are an aging population. There will be a lot of us hitting retirement age. Social Security is challenged. Our children, grandchildren, will be paying higher rates to supplement our Social Security checks in the future. I don't think it's right that we leave them bad roads that they have to also pay for. So we need to address this problem. We need to do that, and how much we do and how we do that, that's what's at issue. Population of, in Clackamas County, of those below poverty level is increasing, and we've got to do something about that. We've got to talk about that, and a lot of that's about creating family wage jobs and whether we tax those businesses out of business. Also, I attended the Village at Mount Hood meeting the other day. It was probably, probably the most, actually, the meeting prior to that was the worst meeting I've ever been to. The last meeting was very challenging. We have to have a strategy session about how we're going to resolve that problem, and it might be that when the applicants come in, we don't accept them until certain parameters are met, like how to run a meeting, how you treat one another, you know. We always do stuff like that. We do retreats and talk about how we're going to treat one another and how we're going to treat the public, how we're going to communicate, and what the rules are, you know. Like, John knows he probably needs three votes to get anything to go, and he doesn't go out of the way to make changes without asking. And that's part of what a team is. And by the way, I thought, Stephen, you did a fantastic job. Your comedy occasionally, your comments were really good, and especially the one, "Does it ache yet?", you know, and... But we have to do something. We cannot let this board be recreated again when Bob Reeves, the founder of that committee, and some of the members of that community moved this, created this organization, that was great. And now it's dysfunctional, it's even worse than dysfunctional, it's destructive, and we need to do something about that. And I look forward to resolving that problem. Let me see. And finally, we have our, this is Blanche. Blanche is a young gal with personality. One thing you'll see is how tall and graceful she is. Her curled tail wags when company arrives. Her good manners include coming when called, sitting when asked, and taking treats politely. Jeez, maybe I should get this dog. She has lots of energy to share in a family. Please visit Blanche today at our Clackamas County Dog Services. And for more information about Blanche and other dogs, contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628. That's on my speed dial. Or visit the website at www.clackamas.us/dogs. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, what wasn't mentioned is that we attended the Milwaukee Cities Dinner that kind of rotates, and we haven't done it for a while, but we attended that at Bob's Red Mill, and they served a great meal, and we had a legislative update at that time. You see those, you know, coming from different venues, and it was always interesting to hear all of their different perspectives. On last Friday, I attended the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization where I represent the Commission. You know, the big ones coming, let alone that, the small ones are pretty interrupting of a schedule as well. So be sure to plan for your family and what they do in the event of a catastrophic event. You know, we often talk about, and every year, we talk about, you know, our disaster readiness. Now, you know, we are cognizant of the fact here at the county that we provide a great deal of necessary services, yet we don't expect anybody to come to work unless they first take care of their family, their loved ones, and make sure that they're all right. To that end, we conduct classes where employees can come and learn how to first protect their family and then please come into work. It was AOC Legislative Day, as Jim had mentioned and others. The Transition Center was pretty awesome, from a real dilapidated, ugly building to something with a real purpose. And I think that great things will come of that Transition Center that the sheriffs will be operating. Villages at Mount Hood, yeah, that was an interesting meeting, very frustrating for somebody like the Commissioners to attend. Went last night to the Clackamas Heritage Council. What a bunch of enthusiastic people who really have a passion for history. There are many opportunities for people to see about Oregon's history here in this county, and they are providing information about the same. Tonight is the Life After War event, as has been mentioned. C4 is also tonight. I'll be attending, and I'm sure the other Commissioners are, the Oregon City State of the City Lunch this next week, and there will be a Strong for Veterans event at Camp Withacum and the Clackamas County Business Alliance this next week. We did discuss the road ahead, vehicle registration, funding, gas taxes last Tuesday. We don't have much time because if we're going to send any kind of questions to the voters, those must be in and done by February 26th, so we'll be working very hard on that in the ensuing weeks. We had a great briefing on Performance Clackamas. It's finally coming along, and we're seeing some results, projections, and I'm real excited for the future and for this next budget period, considering all of that. You know, there's some big bills down the legislature, and you recall that when the Legislature sold this to the public, this idea of meeting in a short session, it was only supposed to be to clean up those things that have a little bit of glitch in them and that they could go forward. Now, huge things are happening down this legislative session where unfortunately, there's just not enough time for the public to really weigh in. That's convenient, and we can talk about minimum wage. One of my pet peeves that I intend to testify on on Monday on behalf of this Commission is the fact that TriMet wants an employee tax. Now, they've existed on and raised constantly the employer tax, but this time, they're dipping into your wallets. Sixty-four dollars if you earn just thirty-four thousand dollars a year. Here we are begging, pleading for twenty-five bucks from drivers, just twenty-five, in order to fix all our ills. If we had the money that TriMet is proposing, we, Clackamas County, could fix 205. We could fix all of our maintenance problems in this county, and we could have the capital necessary to provide matching funds to get federal and state monies in order to build projects. So it's pretty outrageous that Metro, or excuse me, TriMet would bypass the public on purpose and try to jam this through a short legislative session. So I intend to rail on that as much as I can to keep them from doing that and have them return to the voters and ask their question. That being said, that's probably enough. So let me end with this. Enough, she says. Anyway. Don't be impressed by money, followers, degrees, or titles. Be impressed by humility, integrity, generosity, and kindness. So let's go forward on that note. Now, the State of the County. Yes, we will have the State of the County where all the Commissioners will be talking. That, I'll deliver comments about some of the county's key accomplishments in 2015 and our priorities in 2016. This will be followed by a question-and-answer session with all of the Commissioners. Members of the public are welcome to attend and ask a question. You can also pose a question through the county's social media sites. Details are on the county website at www.clackamas.us. The State of the County will be aired live on the Clackamas County Government Channel and streamlined online. You know, probably the three biggest issues coming up for us this next year are road maintenance, land use planning, and sewer. Now, as has been mentioned by the other Commissioners, there's a lot of other little bonfires around this county, and they're constantly coming, and we're going to be addressing those as they do. So there being no further business before the Commission this day, ladies and gentlemen, have a great day. This meeting is adjourned.